Of November, we actually were positive to the bottom line on our operating income of 216,000. We were very pleased by that because in the month of September, we actually had a loss of 1.2 million. So both in October and November, we actually had a positive income. So again, when we had that September loss, that was very concerning to us and really dealt into the reasons why. So on a year-to-date basis, our gross patient revenue, we're currently at 79.7 million, so we're 5.5 million under budget. Now, there's a few reasons for that. We had budgeted for a new general surgeon and then also some other physicians to start earlier than they started. The general surgeon actually let us know at the last minute that he would not be coming. And so that was after we had our budget finalized. So that's a big reason that we're missing those gross revenue numbers. Then when we look at our net patient revenue, so that's our gross revenue less our contractuals. So our contractuals, what that represents is that's our contractual amount that we have to write off. That's Medicare, Medicaid, which we have no control over. Those fee schedules are established and you can't negotiate those fee schedules. But on our commercial insurances, those are the amounts that we can negotiate. So those are contracts that we have. So we bill them the gross charges and then we have to write off a certain percentage or down to a fee schedule. So currently, our contractuals are running 55%. So every dollar that we put on the books, automatically, 55%, depending on our payer mix, we actually have to write that off. So then that leaves net revenue available of 45% to then pay our operating expenses. So speaking of our operating expenses, for the year, we're currently at 41.1 million. Budget was to be at 44.4 million. So we're currently under budget 3.3. Now, some of that is because of those variable costs associated with that revenue, but also we have really been focusing hard on how can we reduce our operating expenses on a monthly basis. One of the things that we've done is our Team Taos. So last year and the year before, especially during COVID, we were paying very high salaries for travelers. So we've really tried to hire, we had a goal of getting to 25 team members join back to Holy Cross. We've met that goal. So our Team Taos has been very successful. Some of those employees had been here prior, and they're now coming back. So again, that's really where we see the travelers are in our labor and delivery because that's very specialized and then in our emergency room. But again, we've been reducing that. So very pleased about that. So year-to-date, our income from operations is actually a loss of 470,000. And then after our mil levy funding, then our net revenue in excess, we're at 774,000. So our operating profit margin was a negative 1.2%. Our total profit margin is 1.9% year-to-date. Next slide, please. This just shows our inpatient admissions. So again, we had a low month in October. We were at 88. In November, we are at 106. So our average for '24, we've been at 112 per month. In '23, our average was 113. And in '22, our average was 112. So that's good in that in '22, we were just on the tail end of COVID but had high census. So we've been able to maintain that inpatient admissions. So I say it's good. It's good for the hospital in that we have those inpatient admissions. It's bad for our community in that we had inpatient admissions. So when I say it's good, it's from the perspective of the hospital. Our average daily census that we've been running, in November, we were at 14. Average is 13.3. In '23, we had average daily census of 14.5. And in '22, it was 15.2. Some of that can be COVID-related as well in that the higher acuity level of the patient than the longer length of stay that they're going to actually have. Newborns, we're currently at eight in November, but year-to-date, we're 14. Prior to that, we were at 12 in '23. And prior to that, in '22, we were at 13. So a little bit higher that we're seeing on our newborns. Sorry, next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Sorry, I was forgetting to tell her next slide. So this is our lab. So our lab, on average this year, we've been at 22,200 tests. In '23, we were at 22,896. And in '22, we're at 23,700. So we've been a little bit lower than we were in '22, and some of that is COVID testing related. So we were doing a lot of COVID testing. We actually had vaccination clinics, COVID testing, and so that's a reflection of why we're running lower. Next slide. X-ray, we're currently an average of 1,0363. In '23, we were at 1,0354. And then in '22, we were 1,0297. So up a little bit on our x-ray from '22. CT, thank you. We were at 882 average this year. In '23, we were at 879, so almost the same. And then in '22, we were at 759. So we've been able to do quite a bit more CTs. The reason for that is we actually did get a new CT machine, and we had quite a bit of backlog. And so as we brought on that new CT, we've been able to catch up on some of the backlog. Next slide. MRI, our average this year's been 141. In '23, we were at 139. And in '22, we were at 145. So pretty stable on our MRI. Next slide. In '24, we were at 653 average. In '23, we were at 635. And then in '22, we were at 643. Now, we are hoping that this increase, we do have a new cardiologist that we're hearing great things about, and so he'll be able to drive some of this ultrasound revenue forward and increase. Next slide. Our mammography visits in 2024, average per month is 196. Last year, we were at 192. Prior to that, in '22, we were at 236. So we had a little bit of a backlog in '22. We recently got the 3D mammography, and so that really helped to instill that. And then a lot of people were waiting until we got that new equipment in. Next slide. Our ED volume, our ED continues to grow. So in '24, our average per month has been 1,0389. Prior to that, we were at 1,0273. Prior to that, we were at 1,00192. So again, every year, we've been seeing our emergency department grow. Next slide. One of the things our board asked us to look at, they said, well, where is that growth coming from? Is it tourists? Is it out of town? Where is it coming from? So this slide really shows for 2023, we've been able to increase that, and 83.9% is coming from Taos County. 8.7% is outside Taos County, and then 7.3% is out of state. So that would be our tourists. So grateful and thankful that our community is actually utilizing our emergency department. Next slide. Our total surgeries have been fairly stable. We're up a little bit this year. We're at 224 average. Last year, we were at 216. Prior year, at 219. Next slide. Our clinic visits, these are our physicians that we actually employ, and they are, these are our professional visits. So we're about the same as we were last year. We're at 1,741. And then in '22, we were at 1,306. So again, this is really a reflection of the physicians that we actually have onboard. Next slide. So our total cash, in November, we were at 11.5 million. You'll notice in September, also when our income level had dropped, and then in September, we were actually down to 8.5 million. So we've been able to increase that 11.5, and that was really related to the HAP payment getting paid first quarter and second quarter of last year. And so that was the HAP, that is the Healthcare Acquired Protection Act, I believe, is the formal name of it. It's our amount that we get from the state related to the amount of patients that you're seeing that are Medicare, Medicaid. So again, the state was behind in those payments. They were working on the methodology, and so we just got those two quarters paid recently. So our next slide. Our days of cash, then, we're at 52.2. And our kind of our target for a critical access hospital is to be at least at 50. So when we drop below that 50, we're getting very concerned, and we start really making sure that we're not doing capital expenditure purchases except for those things that have broken or that need to be replaced. So again, hopeful that we can maintain at least that 50 days of cash. And what that really means is with the same amount of liabilities that we have today, those operating expenses, how many days could we run if there was no additional cash coming in the door? How many days could we actually operate? And it would be 52 days. So it's a key indicator for us. Next slide. Our gross days and accounts receivable. So that's how many days does it take when we submit a bill to either a patient or to Medicare, Medicaid, or an insurance company? On average, how many days does it take us to collect that balance? Well, currently, we're at 50.9 days. So that's how long it takes us to get that payment in. A benchmark for a critical access hospital would be that we would be in those mid-50s. So we're meeting that benchmark, and I would say it's in spite of our system. We have a very antiquated system and have to do a lot of manual processes. But again, pleased that we're at that 50.9. Next slide. And then the next slides that I'll show you are really related to, this is how we've spent the mil levy $2. This is something that you all asked for, as far as can you show us the detail of the equipment? So I won't go through every line item, but I'll just flip through. So next slide. This is, again, just page one of four. Next slide. Two of four. Next slide. Three of four. And then the final slide, four of four. That will actually then show then that we've spent, out of the mil levy $2, we spent $2,529,890. Next slide. This actually shows for those 2.5 million, where has it been spent? So 54% has been spent on equipment. 24% has been spent on IT, and then our building, 22%. And so what I would say on that is a lot of those are, a lot of our equipment is end-of-life. So that's really when it breaks, that's when we're actually fixing it. So one of the new pieces of equipment that we've bought is the CT, but otherwise, it's pretty much those items that are no longer in service can no longer be fixed. So that's the mil levy funding categories. So any questions on that information?
Thank you very much, Ms. Pruitt. Commissioners, questions about the financial reports? Commissioner Beal?
I first want to thank you for your presentation, and also thank you and Mr. Kaiser and the team at Taos, at Holy Cross Hospital, for the great work and what you all have done to really be part of this community. And I just love your approach. And I mean, we've had, as Commissioner Bush stated very, very well, that we have a special relationship, and we just like the openness. And I think the community should be proud of that and look forward to continuing work together. My question is in regards to the hospital, and we all know that it needs some upkeep, and we're lacking, you know, probably some funding in that area. But as we grow, can the hospital handle the growth that we anticipate might happen in the different areas? Let's say, for example, we hope to improve or bring in some specialties, some additional specialties. Can we handle it? And can you speak to that a little bit?
Our goal is, our goal is to be more for the community. I think, I think I may have shared before, with a population of 30,000 to 35,000 in the county, we should be supporting more services. I mentioned cardiac services as our number-one medical transport out of the area. And frankly, sadly, psychiatry's the number-one transfer. And there's challenges there in terms of reimbursement models. They never, I think that's something we have to collaborate on and advocate for because it reimburses so far below the cost of care, it would implode our medical delivery system. But it does take funding. In terms of capacity or the facility size, our emergency department is pressured from the high volumes. They say you'll see your county's population annually through your emergency department. We're seeing almost triple the community's population. And so we do, in time, a long-term goal would be to expand that emergency department, and then to add space for services. I've committed publicly to deliver on chemotherapy. We're looking with, working with a local architect now how we can remodel some space adjacent to our pharmacy because it's, the chemotherapy drugs are mixed from the pharmacy, and we have to have a hood ventilation system because they're toxic. And so we're working on what that estimate may be so we can fund that. And frankly, our chief financial officer shared our clinics. We're working with the primary care physicians in our community. They're beyond capacity, and so we're looking at employing and hiring or offering employment to primary care physicians, which are family medicine physicians, internal medicine physicians, obstetricians, and pediatricians. Like we're a critical access hospital, we would, we would pursue a rural health clinic that helps you cover some of your cost of care. Typically, Medicare and Medicaid reimburse so far below the cost of care you would go under. So it's a means for a rural community to sustain itself. But we really are trying to get sort of a one-campus for convenience of our county so that people know where to go and it's easy to find instead of dispersed everywhere. And really, to have visiting specialists or perhaps employ them, those that we can support, it gives a chance for a primary care physician to refer across the hall when they are visiting. But the number-one demand, when some of your Rebel Ten or strategic planning meeting, when we surveyed the county, the number-one requests for urgent walk-in care, which we need to add to the facility, we thought potentially in that clinic space, and/or primary care. Because if people have to seek primary care out of town, that's typically where they had to go, and it's very burdensome travel, much like chemotherapy. And our, in meeting with our independent primary care physicians, they shared that we welcome additional help. It would lessen the demand on us that we're unable to meet. So we have a demand analysis of at least six, a shortage of six primary care providers. And so we've begun that recruiting process. We don't necessarily have space at the moment, but that's something we're working towards.
Thank you. That was great information. And also just want to thank you for the Team Taos. I'm so pleased that a lot of folks that have lived here for many, many years were able to come back. This is their home. They didn't have a housing problem, right? Because they are from here. And so that's a big plus. And I know that was done in, for two particular reasons that come to mind, and that is, you know, just bringing our folks home and, you know, making it to where it's more of a community hospital. The fill is community-driven, and so appreciate that. Also, I know we have a transportation, it's always been at the top of our minds on transportation and how much, you know, we have to fly folks out. And I know we've had those hard conversations. I just want the folks to know that those are conversations that we continue to have, and, and we want to definitely put our heads together and see how we can minimize that. So I just appreciate all those conversations and being at the table.
When you talked about the community relations, that's a tribute to you all and to our county manager. It's making a world of difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for supporting your county's hospital.
Thank you, James. And I just want to echo the appreciation of the Team Taos effort, bringing back folks was incredibly important to our community. Further questions?
I do have questions. My question is, do you have an audit process? You know, local governments, they submit quarterly reports to, to Department of Finance Administration in Santa Fe, and then have an audit, an annual audit. So what is, what is, what does a hospital do?
Yes, we have an annual audit. So we do an annual financial statement audit, that's yearly. And so that's done currently through Clifton Larson Allen. And then we also have to file, sorry, we also have to file a 990 report. And that's also an audit that we do on an annual basis.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt.
Also, this probably for James. At the beginning of the year, we had three issues that were kind of out, out front. It was the issues of local versus traveling nurses, and you guys have dealt with that very well. It was the issue of financial transparency. And again, that's been pretty well resolved. We appreciate your, your report. And my third is the issue of transportation of patients, ground transportation particularly. Doesn't seem like we've resolved that one. What, 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 what can we do to get that one resolved?
Well, my understanding, perhaps county manager, Harameo, can speak to it. The ambulance is owned by the county. It's, it's confusing situation. I think we, there are a lot of, and including our independent physicians are part of an accountable care organization. So they're sort of penalized when their patient comes to our emergency department, and they, they're on a very expensive helicopter flight to Santa Fe or Albuquerque. So they're wanting to address this. So they pointed out at that time Senate Bill 7 funding. And I think that our ambulance, that list isn't final yet. But there was 80 million for rural health development from the state legislature. And that my understanding is they have enough in their jargon, trucks, ambulances, five, but not enough staff. So to their credit, they don't want to abandon our county for a 911 call or something when they're transferring patients from there to Holy Cross. And so if they leave the community, there's no one to take care of us here, so to speak. So they were applying for funding to help expand staffing so that they would have enough staff to take distant ground transports. Obviously, if we can offer a larger array of services over time, we can maybe lessen the likelihood of having to be transported. But all of our, our board-certified emergency medicine physicians are doing is just trying to get the patient to the appropriate level of care setting. We're not a large urban tertiary hospital, so we don't offer a full array of services. And so they're just trying to get them to the local set. So we'll continue to work with our county manager, with our county commissioners, and see if we can jointly collaborate and come up with some solution. But that's what I understand it to be.
Well, the funding that could be received from the GRT help?
And the GRT, and that's something we're challenged with, like with the mil levy, for the most part, it can only be used for capital, equipment, or building facilities, not for operations. And so '24 is going to be a very challenging year for us when our CFO presented those days of cash. That's our savings account. And we can burn that down just meeting payroll if things don't work out right in terms of what comes in and what, what, what our expenses are. So we're trying to manage that, and hopefully there'll be some federal support in calendar '25 that might try to relieve that operational burden a little bit. But there may be either state funding or federal funding that we might be able to pursue grant, grant funding that could possibly help with it.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, James. Like, that is, I think, a common problem that we all face. It's like, it is much easier, many more opportunities to get money for things, for buildings and trucks, and, you know, you name it. But money for the people to do the work that is needed to be done with those things or in those things is really hard to find, really hard to find. It's frustrating. We know. We get it. So thank you very much. Commissioners, are we done with our Holy Cross team? Okay. Thank you so much for being here this morning, and we appreciate the partnership very much. Thank you. Thank you. You too. This takes us to item eight on our agenda, which is our public comment session. Eight As for public comment, first, we're going to listen to folks in the room, and then I'll open up the phone line after that. So if you're listening online, please take note of the number, 575-737-6310. Members of the public can speak on their, whatever they would like to for three minutes. We can't take any action. We can't engage in conversation because the State's Open Meeting Act says that any topic that we actually discuss has to be published 72 hours in advance. So, but you are free to come up. When, we'll just kind of take people as we can, come up to the microphone, tell us, please, your name and where you live, and I will gently time you. So is there anyone in the room? Yes, please come on up.
Hello. Thank you, county commissioners, for having us. I know your job is not always easy, and being out in the holidays, it's an honor being here. And thank you. And thank you so much. My name is Cheytonia Masara. I help run the environmental nonprofit Earth, Environmental Solutions Reaching Throughout I'm here to talk about a couple of different things, but I want to just bring up, I'd like to be up here right now talking about the ski valley and the sewage that has been poured into the rivers around Hondo, or even talking about the destruction of the ecosystem that's happening by the ski valley. And I think that needs to be addressed, but obviously at another time. Also, I would like to be talking about the over 1.5,000 people living on the west side of the gorge where I was born and raised. And how they have a lack of infrastructure, like transportation, water and electricity. But instead, I'm here to talk about how more of an international thing. You've heard us up here before, but the Israeli military is committing war crimes. Two days ago, Pope Francis spoke out about how the IDF has been killing indecently or killing noncombatants in Gaza. Like on Saturday, a sniper rifle killed a mother and a daughter, a Catholic mother and daughter inside of a church in Gaza. There were noncombat, they were noncombatants. They also Friday killed three Jewish hostages that had a white flag and were trying to get to get out of the horrific war that was there, and they got murdered. Yeah, that's a sad reality that a lot of Christians are going through right now in the Gaza and in the West Bank. In the West Bank, Christian homes have been being raided in the holy city of Bethlehem. Their doors broken down and houses searched, what would some say is against international law. The city of Bethlehem has now declared that all their churches and their city is no longer going to be celebrating Christmas. And the city of Bethlehem is one-third Catholic and Christian, and they are not able to celebrate Christmas in their local churches or in their public facilities because of the ongoing raids from Israel. And I just want to relate that being to how fortunate we are here to be able to celebrate in our local churches and in our community, in our streets and such. I'm asking you all to please ask Teresa Ledger Fernandez to sign 786 resolution. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a beautiful holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Masara. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can bend it, too.
How is this?
Perfect. Thank you.
I want to thank you all so much for letting us speak. I'm here on behalf of the Palestinian people worldwide, and especially those suffering unspeakable atrocities in Gaza as we speak. Since we've been at this meeting, you know, one Palestinian child is killed every 10 minutes. The death toll there is up around 20,000. In the horrible war in Ukraine, two years, 20,000 civilians killed. Here, two months, 20,000 civilians killed, half of them children. I'm also here to speak out on behalf of the Israeli hostages and the Palestinian prisoners in Israeli jails and the hostage families who are having to fight their government in order to try to free their people. The situation, as you know, in Gaza is beyond belief in terms of horror. The Human Rights Watch has said that Israel is using starvation as a weapon of war. They are going after the journalists. Over 100 journalists have been killed. They do not allow any foreign journalists. It's all Palestinian Al Jazeera journalists. Now, obviously, this is for two reasons. One is they don't want the word to get out worldwide any more than it is. And two, if they started killing all those journalists from the US, England, France, et cetera, there would be a world outcry. But 100 Palestinian journalists and their families, they target people, they know where everyone lives because they text people when they're going to bomb their neighborhood and tell them they have 10 minutes or two hours or whatever to evacuate the hospital. It's really up to the grassroots at this point. That is you, the line has to go from the bottom up. Biden is slapping the Israelis on the hands while he's sending Austin over there to assure unconditional US support for their campaign of mass murder of babies. We do not want to support this. Biden is throwing the election to Trump. Do we want to live under Trump? Right now Biden is in the process of throwing the immigrants under the bus so that the Republicans will agree to his funding of his multiple wars that exist now.
Thank you. Thank you. And could you please tell us your name and where you live for the record? Tell me here. Could you please tell us your name?
Yes, darling, I'm so sorry. I'm Tanya Zivkovich. I wrote a very strong my turn in the paper that came out on the 30th of November that I hope you've all read.
Thank you, Mrs. Zivkovich.
Can I continue or my three minutes are up?
Your time is up.
Okay, dear. Well, I just urge you to do whatever you can because what are we going to do? Just watch this slaughter continue?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room who would like to take their three minutes and talk to us? Mr. Munoz.
Hello. Thank you, commissioners. My name is David Munoz. I live in Rancho Tito's. And I'm a member of Renewable Taos, which is a group that's looking at all types of energy and the transition. And I'm here to encourage you on behalf of one of my colleagues, Steve Meyer, who you probably know, he couldn't make it today, but this is an important week. And you'll find out soon here why. There's a $10 million fund to support low-income energy efficiency programs throughout the state. Taos County Administration has committed to submit the grant application before the due date, which is this Friday, December 22nd. So that's why the urgency. And the demonstration of your support to your community commissioners will assist with this. So this is for the people in the room. Members of Renewable Taos have worked on this for well over a year and provided the county with a complete draft application. It includes oversight by the Resilience Community Coalition, another community group composed of leaders of our county government, municipal government, larger businesses, UNM Taos Foundations, and other local representatives of federal agencies. This estimated 2.6 million three-year program will provide safety, comfort, energy savings for over 1,800 low-income households in our community. In addition, in my opinion, valuable data will also be acquired during this process to understand better who needs new doors, windows, heating systems, more expensive things that we can rewrite other proposals to get funding for, including energy efficient appliances. Proposals are due, like I said, to New Mexico NMRD Friday, December 22nd this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to? Yes, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Grossman. I live in Canyon. I've been a resident of Taos County for 48 years. And I thank you all for your service and really appreciate living in this peaceful, wonderful place. I'm here today because the town recently passed a resolution having to do with HR 786. And I'm hoping that the county will maintain what it's charged to do in terms of taking care of the things like the hospital, the roads, safety, and the well-being of Taos County residents. I think having the town or the county getting involved in controversial global things such as what's going on in Gaza and Israel is a mistake. I think we need to stay focused on what's here. I think the things that are happening in the Middle East are horrible. I think everybody can agree that we want to cease fire, but I think it's very complicated. It's the resolution 786 calls for a blanket ceasefire without any kind of conditions for hostages or anything having to do with Hamas, which is a terrorist organization. We all know what happened on October 7th. Those kinds of things will continue to happen if Hamas remains in power. The role of the county government, I believe, is to be county government people and to take care of that. I think once we open the door and get involved with global politics, I think it would be an endless stream of people coming here, taking up your time, wasting tax pears dollars, dealing with things that are inappropriate for this body. So I urge you to maintain doing what you're doing and not go down the same road that the town did, using time, money, and energy for something that is not within the purg of the, of this government body. I think this is, we live in a wonderful, free country that allows us all to express our feelings. I know that there's a lot of strong feelings that people have about what's going on. I certainly do. As a Jewish individual living here in Taos County, I felt very free and open. And I have to say that for the first time ever, I have fear, I have concerns because a lot of the language, a lot of things that are being said are fomenting antisemitism. And along with that, I think there's also a feeling of anti-Islamic people, and that isn't okay. And we need to find a way to be able to have conversation with each other in a peaceful way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Here and then here and then in the back. Come on up. Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Grossman, and I'm related to Bruce Grossman. I live in Taos Canyon. I want to thank you, thank the council for providing this opportunity to speak. And having been in Taos for a long time, I really appreciate that the county, all the roles that the county plays in our everyday lives. I'm sorry. Say that again? Can't hear me? Okay. I'm nervous. I've never done this before. You take care of the roads, recycling, public safety, and administering, administering the land use and zoning within the county and the hospital and many other things as well. I would reiterate what my husband said. When it comes to global politics, I think it's inappropriate for the county to get involved. Number one, because it's not the role of the county. And number two, because it becomes divisive, particularly in this situation in the Middle East. Of course, everyone and I do want peace. And it's extremely complicated. I would urge residents to write their congressmen and senators because that is where things can happen. The murder of, the murder or killing of innocents regardless of age, gender, political standing or anything is abhorrent, tragic, and sad beyond belief. I would conclude by saying now more than ever is a time for harmony in Taos County, Taos community, and all around. To illustrate, I'd like to illustrate one thing. On December 13th, the Taos Jewish Center held its 22nd Annual Peace Hanukkah at St. James Episcopal Church, which was attended by nearly 200 people. Representatives from the following religious organizations and nonreligious organizations participated and gave inspiring words. It was the Taos Jewish Center, the Taos Pueblo, the Clear Light Quaker Fellowship, the Muslim, Zen Buddhist, St. James, NIM Karoli Baba Ashram, Religious Science Ministers, and Golden Willow. And to conclude, we have so much in common. Please, let's not forget that. We live in a wonderful place and we are able to speak, hopefully civilly. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. Thank you so much, commissioners, for hearing our voices today. My name is Nausicafe Bird. I live in Rancho Tito's. And I'm here in solidarity with millions of Jewish people around the world, speaking up against the genocides happening in Gaza currently, also in Africa. And these genocides are completely preventable. We, as Americans, have a responsibility to act in a grassroots fashion in any ways that we can to prevent what's happening right now. I'm going to take a breath because I'm really nervous. Taos is a place where people look after each other. There's a lot of poverty here. There's a lot of, there's a lot of need for grassroots organization. There's a lot of need for people showing up for each other. And I think that's why we see, we see so many people sitting up and speaking up about this. Thank you for hearing us. I think that it's important to remember that borders don't separate us. We're all connected. I can't imagine if half of the population of Taos were murdered. I feel like we need to somatically feel the reality of that and not see each other as separate. Our congresspeople don't respond to us. We try reaching out to our congressman, Teresa Ledger Fernandez, and she does not get back to us. We, what else do I have here? There are Arabic people in Taos who don't feel safe living here. We also have a responsibility to take care of them and speak up for them. There's, yeah, sweeping Islamophobia all over this country, and we have to take a stand. We have to stand up and, and take care of our marginalized, marginalized community. My husband just came up here and spoke. He mentioned that Bethlehem canceled Christmas. I just want us to really feel that. Bethlehem, where Jesus was born, canceled Christmas in observance of this genocide. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. First in, then way, way back, and then red, and then red.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, county commissioners, for letting me speak. My name is Michael Davis. And my, my father's father's family, the German Jewish side of the family, all were completely genocided in the, in World War II by the Nazis. I want to say that over, they're saying that over, the UN is saying over half of 2 million people in Gaza are literally starving to death. And Israel is trying to herd almost 2 million people into an area in southern Gaza the size of Heathrow Airport. It's now come out that they were trading stocks on the, the stock market in Tel Aviv right in the days before, before the Hamas attack, showing that they had knowledge of this attack. And now it's come out that the, that the Israeli government and military had knowledge of this attack over a year before. So with my time left, I want to read what I wrote, what I read at the Taos meeting last week. An injustice to one is an injustice to all. We're asking you, our county commissioners, to appeal to your hearts, to appeal to the hearts of our elected officials, your hearts, to inspire your humanity to rise to the occasion that our county be a place of higher consciousness and higher morality, a place important globally. They say, think globally and act locally. But if that is true, then we must also think locally and act globally. But if that is true, then we must also think locally and act globally. We are asking for our elected officials to now think globally, just as we said not in our name when our powerful nation invaded Iraq and genocided their people based on false intelligence about so-called weapons of mass destruction in 2003, and a few thousand of us marched to Donald Rumsfeld's house. So we're now asking our elected representatives to stand up now against genocide and violence and cruelty, and make a strong stand that Taos condemns genocide of our brothers and sisters, of the children in Palestine and Gaza halfway around the globe, and that we say not in our name, but rather in the name of love and peace and everything that is good in this world. We're asking our elected officials, you all, to do something now, because it does matter. And every little part of the whole makes a difference in the bigger picture. So in our small way, let's, we can do something. And otherwise, they, these relatives here said, you're not supposed to do that, but then don't vote for president either. The one is the all, and we do have a, we can play a part, because just as the town passed it, if the county passes it, then we can go to the state level, and then the state can affect the nation, and it's the most powerful nation on the planet in the history of the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Phyllis Landis, and I live in El Prado, New Mexico. I'm a little nervous, too. I find that I'm disturbed to hear that the mayor and the town council, without full disclosure to the community, decided to pass a resolution surrounding the Middle East crisis without having a full publicized town discussion around the resolution. Many of us in our community, community are perplexed why our elected officials here in this small, peaceful town of Taos are even spending time in this horrific international event, not acknowledging the full scope of the horrors surrounding it. No disrespect intended to the elected officials. However, many of us question the mayor's and the town council's reactive actions that don't include our community as a whole, nor a voice from those they supposedly represent. As long as our elected officials have decided to spend their time delving into the international political fray, we ask the mayor and the town council, how about very serious, important resolutions as well? Where is the resolution condemning the slaughter and massacre of 1,200 innocents on October 7th in Israel that started this horrific event? Why no resolution or acknowledgement asking for the over 100-plus hostages, remaining innocent captives, to be released? And unbelievably, no resolution condemning the evil terrorist Hamas? No acknowledgement at all of the evil terrorists hiding like rats in tunnels beneath schools, mosques, hospitals, and behind innocent civilian shields? Additional relevant resolutions? Why no resolution about the horrific 70,000 killed in Ukraine by Russia? Condemnation of Russia invasion and war killings? Why no resolution about human rights horrors ongoing in China? Or the brutal discrimination, killing, and torture of women, men in Iran, Syria, and more? Why no resolution surrounding these issues? Yes, many of us, in fact, most of the people that I know, believe there needs to be a ceasefire. But we question the mayor and town council leaping into the fray, into the polexis of this international crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Mason Sherwood, and I live in Taos. And I came here, I felt it was important. I have children, and our, our U.S. tax dollars are paying to bomb innocent civilians, children and their families. My understanding is that our population here in Taos is equal to the amount of children who've been murdered with our tax dollars. And I'm so honored to have been a part of that meeting with the mayor and the town council, where they stood up for human rights. My father stood up and marched with Martin Luther King. I came to Taos, New Mexico in 2004 with the Global Peace Walk. And I, I have children, and I feel it's important to stand up for what's right. And I feel that if we don't stand up for, for injustice in this world, that it could happen to us, and other people will be complacent towards us. That we have a responsibility as human beings to stand up for what's right, and as American citizens. And yes, we're very fortunate how peaceful it is. I've had many friends who were child victims of war, and, and they know absolutely war is wrong, without a doubt. And I, I feel honored to be a part of this town, where the mayor stood up for human rights, for other human beings that are the same as us and have just as much a right to live a peaceful life as we do, and to celebrate Christmas. I think it's important that we stand up for what is right. I feel that war is, has been going on since the dawn of man, and that it is time for human beings to do what's right, to work together, to clean up our mess all over this planet, and to live in peace together. And over 75 years ago, after the horrific bombing and melting down of villages Hiroshima and Nagasaki in Japan, they created the United Nations. And the Charter said, "To live together in peace and to end the scourge of war for succeeding generations." But what's happening now, more than 75 years later? Yes, every voice counts, and Taos, New Mexico, Taos County, we make a difference in this world. And I've been seeing videos all over the world of people making a stand for human rights, for basic human rights. There's so much politics, because, because, because. There is no reason for, for committing war crimes continuing now 75 years later. It is still wrong. And if you guys can work together to pass a resolution, it will be on behalf of all living beings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room? Good morning.
Good morning. Am I out?
Yes, you are. Uh, no, push the button. There you go.
Oh, no. I'm Neil Thilke from Yanosan Juan. Back to local damage. Done by the, by the previous manager, Cordova, and the previous commission in their use I don't know how much, how many, how much longer I'm going to be able to be here, speaking at Citizen Concerns, if I can keep my thoughts together. The damage that was done to me personally was policy, county policy, that threatened our road department from being fired for any county resources on our road, on a public road that's not a county-authorized road. Also, the policy that, that said that emergency management is conditional on living on a county-designated road. I think those, those policies could be corrected. I don't know whether it's a resolution or what. But, I don't know. I can't involve council, because I'm on limited income. And, I don't know, I'm going on and on. So before my time is up, thank you, and have a, have a wonderful year.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room before we open the phone line? Okay, I'm going to take the phone off of Do Not Disturb, and again, that number is 575-737-6310, if there's anybody watching, listening online who would like to call in. And we'll give it just a minute or so. Good morning. You've called into the Taos County Commission meeting. Okay, that one we lost. Good morning. You've called into the Taos County Commission meeting.
Oh, hi. Thanks for picking up. My name is Erin Avril, and I live in Arroyo Hondo. Yeah, I'm calling to submit a public comment in support of the county adopting and implementing a ceasefire resolution, following due of what the Taos Town Council did. Things are really dark right now, and it's kind of hard to comprehend how thinking that continued violence is going to solve the problem. And, you know, I, I was a botanist, and just from an ecological standpoint, thinking about the similarities between Palestine and here. You know, they're both very dry, arid environments, and very sensitive, and the fact that, you know, Israeli government is insulting the earth in Gaza right now, that they're, I mean, dropping the equivalent of two nuclear weapons. I don't understand how that is supposed to reach a solution. And history shows that change moves from the ground upwards. So that's why it's so important, as a county, again, in following suit what the town did, to vocalize support for a ceasefire, because then that will encourage our elected representatives to do the right thing that will ultimately save the most lives. Because, you know, Palestine was once a multicultural hub. Everyone there just wants to live in peace together. And, yeah, so those are just my two cents. I appreciate you for listening and taking the time to hear our comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if there is anyone else, I think we lost one call. The number again is 575-737-6310. Good morning. You've called into the Taos County Commission meeting.
Hello?
Good morning.
County Commission meeting. Oh, hang on, let me mute mine. Yeah. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I think you muted your computer. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is it better?
Yes, go ahead, Suzy.
Hi. Oh, hi. My name is Suzy Schwartz. I live in El Prado. I am a Jewish American descended from Russian and German Jews, and I proudly stand with Jewish Voice for Peace. Commissioners, I want to thank you, as always, for the opportunity to make public comments. We were informed that the commission will not be taking action as a body to call on our representative to Congress, Teresa Ledger Fernandez, to sign onto House Resolution 786, calling for de-escalation and an immediate ceasefire in Israel and occupied Palestine. This is disappointing. Yeah. So anyway, while, I just want to say that while you are celebrating this season of peace and goodwill with families and friends in your warm and safe homes, I'm asking you to keep in mind at all times that Palestinians are being slaughtered in our names and with our tax dollars every minute. Taosanos for peaceful and livable futures will continue to pressure Teresa Ledger Fernandez and also Senators Heinrich and Heinrich and Ben Ray Luhon in all ways at our disposal with ordinary citizens and grassroots activists, even though we have little hope that they will take meaningful action. At this stage, Teresa's call for the two-state solution and a generic ceasefire is a joke. Gaza is almost nothing but rubble, and the West Bank and Jenin are being attacked more brutally every day. More and more evidence is being revealed daily about the Israeli military's atrocities and execution-style murders. thirst, disease, and famine are reaching ever more catastrophic levels. If or by the time our government takes action, Israel's extermination and mass expulsion of Palestinians will have been completed, all under the guise of Israel's right to defend itself from Hamas. Here are the words Congressman Rashida Tlaib to finish. Quote, "While there are growing attempts to silence the diverse coalition of people advocating for peace, fighting to save lives, no matter their faith or ethnicity, ethnicity should not be controversial, it's not complicated. We will not be intimidated, we will not be silenced, and we will not stop calling for an end to this violence. I urge my colleagues to listen to their constituents and call for a ceasefire now to save Israel's lives." Rashida Tlaib. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, we will leave the phone on just for another couple of minutes, maybe take one more call if there is one. The number again is 575-737-6310. Good morning. You've called into the Taos County Commission meeting.
Hi, my name is Natasha, and I'm here today as a constituent with Palestinian roots to address the elephant in the room, and many, many rooms. As we gather here today as a community and a commission to better our community, another is being destroyed. Our safety is tied to their safety. When our communities are being brutally murdered on our tax dollars, we hold nothing but a moral obligation to not be complicit in such crimes. With information at our fingertips and the instant access to have a conversation with anyone all over the world, anyone still blindly buying into narratives of justification, of relentlessly bombing the people of Gaza and calling it safety for one group, should be deeply ashamed in this moment, after 75-plus days. If one group of people is not safe, it does not make another group safer, ever. The constituents earlier who spoke and denounced their responsibility as American citizens in the name of harmony and inconvenience to our tax dollars are misled in what was once unity in Palestine amongst all faith and religion. I want you to imagine this, a time in Palestine where Jewish, Christian, and Muslim communities lived side by side amongst each other with nothing but respect and peace. They would eat each, eat at each other's homes, share and honor each other's traditions, and even watch each other's kids as if they were their own. This isn't hard for Palestinians to imagine, as Palestine was once able to exist as a multi-faceted, with no military force, occupation, and just neighbors looking out for one another. Now I'd like to paint another picture for you. Imagine a little girl, eight years old, walking home from school. When she left for school that day, she had no idea that she would come home to not find her parents, but instead find her clothes thrown out on the street, and her neighbors in a frenzy to grab her because her own parents had already been forced out. Her life should never be the same. As you can imagine, that would stick with a young girl. That young girl was my tita, another word for grandmother. My sido, grandfather, was also eight in another part of Bethlehem, also fleeing to Jordan. Not everyone was so lucky, and as we see today, is lucky, to have made a safe exit through the subjective 75 years of violence, displacement, and brutal occupation.
Thank you.
Let my voice be a sign that we're only getting louder, filled with more love and growing in numbers. We come to you today with nothing but peace and an exponential amount of love, to ask you to stand with our Palestinian mothers and sisters.
Thank you for calling in this morning. Thank you. Thank you for calling in this morning. Thank you. Okay, we have one comment that was emailed in, which I will go ahead and read into the record. I will also be timing myself. And the comment reads, "My name is Lauren Wilsie and I live in Taos County. Thank you, council members and commissioners and Taos folks for being here today and for your support. I'm really proud of this town for standing for justice for all people by passing the ceasefire resolution for Taos. I think that speaks volumes and gives me hope in these times of great despair. Moving forward, I hope that we can keep this momentum going higher up the ladder, all the way to Congress. I also hope that this matter could become a regular agenda item until a ceasefire is achieved at a national level." On December 12th, Teresa Ledger Fernandez issued a statement saying she called for a ceasefire in Gaza, but House Resolution 771 is only a temporary ceasefire. In her emails back to me, she says Israel has a right to defend itself in a manner consistent with international law, and yet we have seen war crime after war crime committed by the IDF without being held accountable. She has not honored her constituents' urges to instead sponsor House Resolution 786 for a permanent ceasefire because she has concerns about it. The most recent data poll shows that 66% of American voters support a permanent ceasefire. More than 140 congressional interns sent an open letter calling for a ceasefire despite the risk of professional consequences and harassment. Their letter read, "There is no justification for the wanton killing of civilians. There is no justification for intentionally bombing hospitals, shelters, water supplies, religious sites, or schools. This is no longer an act of self-defense. It is genocide. While we refrain from telling our bosses how to do their jobs, as congressional interns and fellows, we owe it to the American people to expose the patent malpractice of Congress," end quote. The letter also accuses member of Congress of ignoring the will of their constituents in refusing to support a permanent ceasefire and claims that constituent voices are being intentionally suppressed in congressional offices. So what is stopping her from adopting the resolution that her constituents are desperately calling for all over New Mexico? What is stopping her from listening to all the New Mexicans who are in the streets and urging her through emails and phone calls to her office? Furthermore, what is stopping her from listening to people, young and old, from diverse cultural backgrounds, different faiths, American Jews and Muslims alike, veterans, people from all different walks of life who have all come together urgently calling for the US-backed genocide to stop? What is stopping her from listening to the rest of the nations on this planet who are demanding that America call for a permanent ceasefire and stop supplying arms to Israel? And that is the end of that statement. So I'll go ahead and pick up this call. Good morning. You've called into the Taos County Commission meeting.
Good morning, Taos County Council. My name's Enya. I'm calling in also to support the county in moving towards a resolution, so 786 for ceasefire. Reason being is we've seen ongoing aggression, 74 days now. We need foreign intervention at this rate. We've seen war crimes upon war crimes, and we need an unbiased international investigation to step in at this point on top of international humanitarian aid to enter. Right now, the Rafa border is currently closed under occupation. The infrastructure is broken. Foreign aid cannot reach the inner cities in the north, let alone the aid's not distributed evenly. And this is why we're calling for a ceasefire for civilians, for their dignity, and we need the international community to step in so that this aid is distributed evenly and for international unbiased investigations for the war crimes to move forward to maintain any sense of dignity. Please and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I think at this point, we, why don't we, commissioners, we want to take a five-minute break before we move on with our business, just to catch our breath. I want to thank everybody for speaking this morning. Thank you for coming out, for calling in. We appreciate hearing all of your voices. So commissioners, is there a motion for a five-minute break? Motion for a five-minute break, please. Is there a second? Thank you, commissioners. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatenias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bush.
Yes, thank you. Okay, everyone, we're on recess for five minutes. We'll be back short. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to take a brief recess. Commissioners, is there a motion to come back into our regular meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatenias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bush.
Yes, we are returning to regular session at 10:21 a.m. and we are on agenda item number nine, new business. Nine A is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the regular meeting schedules for the county commission for January 2024. Mr. Harmio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Erin Biddy just put up the calendar. Is the Open Meetings Act that we will ask the commissioner to vote on does have the meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. We would need the commission to take action for the month of January if the commission decides to move the meetings around. So one question is, do we keep the meeting on the second, which is the day after the holiday? The county will be opened, or do we move it to the third or the fourth? Just the holiday lag, so to speak, or, but from a staff perspective, we're still good with the second. I did talk to Clerk Montoya. There would be somebody here if we kept it on the second. Nobody's going to be on vacation. Or there'll be somebody here if we kept it on the second. The meeting of the 16th does pose a couple of conflicts, which is the opening day of the legislature, also the opening day of the New Mexico Counties Conference, Legislative Conference. On the morning of the 16th, Commissioner Miguel Romero has an insurance meeting at 9 o'clock. Commissioner Vehil has a board of directors meeting. So conceivably, one or both of the commissioners would miss the meeting of the 16th if we kept it, as is. The, or, the meeting, the week of the 22nd, we're looking to install the new equipment for the camera system. So we're blocking off any meetings from occurring the 22nd. And Mr. Miller has also requested that we block off the commission chambers for the 29th in case everything doesn't get repaired or there's a delay in the repairs the week of the 22nd. So like I said, we could either keep the meeting schedules the second and the 16th, just knowing that, I'm not sure. I think Commissioner Vehil has her meeting. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Brent. I think that consistency as much as possible would be a good idea if we can achieve that, at least on the second. But it sounds like the 16th is a challenge for much of the commission. Is there any way, and then we can obviously have discussion about this, is there any way to meet on the 22nd instead of the 23rd, perhaps before the work on the technology happens? No, they're going to be here at 9 a.m. working on it? Okay. Can we do the 30th on that, just to make up for that?
We're not sure. In case there's a problem in the, call it construction of the new system, that's why we're blocking off the week of the 29th as well, in case there's any problems. From a staff perspective, we're also good with just having one meeting in the month of January.
Okay, comments?
Yeah, I think we should keep the one scheduled for the second as scheduled and change the one that was scheduled for the 16th to the recommended date. What do you recommend?
At this point, I would recommend that there will be one meeting in the month of January.
Can we make that for just January 9th?
We can have a meeting for January 9th and go back to back. And from, the one department that would probably benefit the most is probably finance going back to back.
So we have a suggestion, and thank you, Miguel, for maybe meeting on the second and the ninth.
No, just January 9th.
Just the ninth. Just the ninth, okay.
I'd rather just keep it on schedule.
So how do you feel, Miguel, about the second and ninth? Only because I'm thinking of finance and we definitely don't want to slow down anyone from...
Don't matter to me. I just said the ninth, have the one meeting for the month.
And that is, as you said, Brent, the staff recommendation is one meeting in the month of January because there is so much going on, both as the legislature kicks off and with our technology upgrades in this room, which is really kind of the wrench in the picture here. I mean, we could work around it if it were just the legislative thing where we're all going to be in Santa Fe that week. And then we also have the two holidays. So we have a proposal to just have one meeting on the ninth? Any further?
Or to have two meetings, which...
What would an alternative date be, since it has to be before the 22nd for the second meeting? And it can't be the 16th, 17th, 18th?
Or we just have one meeting on the second, and that's the meeting for the month. Unless we have to have another one. Let's just go for the next meeting on second and play it by ear.
I guess my only question...
I'm sorry. Chair, pardon me. The only question is, will it hold back any business if we don't meet that second time? We just don't want to affect the staff.
At this point, we wouldn't know what it would affect.
Too early to...
And there's stuff that, any budget adjustments, we meet the ones, would wait till February 6th. I don't know of anything pending, but I'm not sure that even if there is budget adjustments, but just anticipating. Right now, I mean, there's budget adjustments that I would like to make them and see if we can get posted for the first meeting.
Okay, why don't, here's a suggestion, or an idea, or both. Why don't we go ahead and meet as planned, keeping our schedule consistent for all of us, on Tuesday, January 2nd? And then should we, would it be possible, should we need to convene again later in the month for business that needs to be addressed, perhaps that week of the 22nd? the month for business that needs to be addressed, perhaps that week of the twenty-second, we could meet online using GoToMeeting and possibly, no, that we we cannot have an online-only meeting?
I don't know if you can remember the whole Microsoft.
But that, yeah.
During the process, we're going to go away from GoToMeeting. So anybody participating online will end up being participating for Microsoft Teams. I'm not sure how Callan's going to integrate YouTube. Chief Cordova is an example. He's at down in Secor at the Fire Academy right now. He's on GoTo, watching the meeting, and he'll participate that way in the future. It's going to be, they're going to be done through Teams.
We're trying to fix the problem, and if we need that.
Need the time, okay.
We need that leadway to fix the problem.
If if this were up to me, I would recommend just doing it on the ninth, but this is a Commission decision.
I hear you. Thank you. Thank you, Anissa. So and Brent, what you're suggesting now is, at least if we met that one time in January on the ninth, that gives us that week of the second to kind of gather up what else we might need. So Commissioners, what do you think about?
The other way around, that we meet on the second so that we can determine at that point what we need.
No, but if we don't have another meeting set, then.
That we determine that on the second.
I think we've determined we're probably only going to have one meeting in January, so we need to determine what the best day in January is to have one meeting.
January ninth would give everything more time to kind of develop and get addressed. So can we?
Because of the system upgrade that's happening in the Commission chambers, right? So that's happened in the last, the second, the last two weeks in January, so that leaves those off the table completely.
Right. So what do we think about one meeting in January on January ninth? Someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion from Miguel to meet on January ninth in January. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini. Yes, Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes. Okay, so for the record, our next and our only January meeting will be on January ninth, 2024, at nine a.m. at our usual time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this takes us to Agenda Item Ten, Resolutions and Ordinances. Ten A is Discussion Only Regarding Resolution Number 2023-53, a resolution combining the Taos County Administrative Fire Department and the Taos County Emergency Medical Services Department, and repealing and replacing all previous resolutions. And you said that Chief Cordova is online. I see his square. Good morning, Chief. We have Mike Cordova with us here, online, to present. Mike, are you there? Okay, thank you. Chief, are you there? Can you hear us? We cannot hear you, so I'm not sure if you can hear us. I can see you. You can't, yeah. We can't, we can't hear you. Sorry. I'm not sure what's going on.
He can't figure it out. Can he call in? Yeah.
Do we want to move on to ten B, and then we can come back to ten A? Or do you think we're almost there? Okay. Okay, then we'll try to, we'll hold on for just a moment. Anyone watching online, we're just trying to get our audio set up for our presenter, Chief Mike Cordova.
All right, Mike, you're on speaker.
Okay, sorry, I called the sixty-three-ten, but it just said it was busy, but can you all hear me?
This isn't at sixty-three-ten?
I did try sixty-three-ten, but it just said that the line was busy.
What about sixty-three-ten? Yes, this is sixty-three-ten.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Good morning, Commission. Sorry, technical difficulties, not too sure what's going on, but we're down in Secor doing our librarians right now, and in regards to the resolution, it's not trying to erase the past or anything of that nature. What we're just trying to do is encompass everything that we do, and the word rescue will encompass EMS, it'll encompass, obviously, vehicle accidents, search and rescue, rope rescue, any other operations that we do. That was the reasoning for it, and that was the only reason for it. It just made more sense to combine everything to make it more formal, at least on our end. Ultimately, it's up to you all, but we'd appreciate the support, and I also sent out some pictures to our deputy manager and our county manager to share with you all on what the crews are doing down here. They're doing great. They just came out of the burn building, so they're doing good, but I really feel that this resolution would be a good thing for Morel, and also just financially as well. We can utilize a couple different funds to help the department as a whole, but I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for Chief Cordova? And Brent, is there anything, any context you wanted to add?
No, I think Chief Cordova covered it. We did meet last week regarding this. I mentioned it in my last, the last meeting report that I did, that we're going down this path. We did discuss having this as a two-meeting resolution, and give you guys the opportunity to hear the draft, raise any questions that may come up, and this would be on the first meeting in in January, and then we thought about that, too. New year and new resolution for the Fire and Rescue Department.
Okay, thank you. So, no questions? Okay, then we will look forward to seeing this resolution on our January ninth agenda. Thank you, Chief, and you guys be safe and, you know, be safe and learn lots down there.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Have a good day.
You, too. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to Item Ten B, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-54, a resolution approving the 2024 legislative priorities for Taos County. Ms. Laurie Montoya, our grants administrator is here. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As we discussed in our past meeting, we made our priorities, and we've now put them in a form of resolution, and we're hoping for adoption.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion around 2023-54? I know this is something that we have discussed before. You presented to us before, so thank you. If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2023-54, approving our 2024 legislative priorities.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini. Yes. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes, thank you very much. 2023-54 is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm the next two also.
All right. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. Eleven A is Acceptance and Approval of Department of Aging and Long-Term Services Department Grant Agreements for the Purchase, Replacement, and Installation Combination of Combination Walk-In Freezer Cooler Unit at the Senior Center, and this is appropriation number The floor is still yours.
Thank you. So as you read, it's for the Senior Center, and it's a freezer walk-in cooler, $65,000, and the reversion date is 6/30/2025.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Laurie about this agreement, the grant agreement for a walk-in freezer cooler unit at our senior center? No questions, no comments? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the Department of Aging and Long-Term Services grant agreements, appropriation number A23H-2069. Motion to approve. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes. The grant agreement is approved. Thank you. And eleven B is Acceptance and Approval of Department of Aging and Long-Term Services Department Grant Agreement to Plan, Design, Construct, Equip, and Furnish Quesa Senior Center, and this is appropriation number A22G-5357. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Yes, so this was long awaited, this $727,000. And so Richard and Gilberto and Don, I think, already have a plan in place for how to expend all the monies accordingly, and of course, this reversion date is 6/30/2026.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about this grant agreement for the Quesa Senior Center?
No.
Okay, no questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to approve Department of Aging and Long-Term Services grant agreement for planning, constructing, equipping, and furnishing the Quesa Senior Center, appropriation number A22G-5357.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Miguel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini. Yes, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes. All right. This grant is also approved. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work on these. Okay, this takes us to Item Twelve, Department Matters, and twelve A is Approval of the Record of Decision Appeal-23-003 for the Board of County Commissioners' decision to deny Appeal-23-003 and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve SPUSE-23-001, which allows applicant Amanda Stapelford a special use permit to operate a four-pad RV park on a 1.27-acre parcel off La Canada Road in the Arroyo Seco area. And just in time, we have Mr. Andy Jones, our senior planner. Thank you so much, Andy, for being here, and thank you for your work all the way through on this. We know it hasn't been super easy, but you've done an awesome job, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. This is a really simple item today, and your packet was the draft Record of Decision to just formalize the the affirmation of the Planning Commission's decision regarding special use 23001, and so, and to deny Appeal 23003. So I stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for making it clear that we're just basically taking this up to formalize what we heard last meeting. We have to formalize the the decision with a vote, so is there any questions or comments for for Mr. Jones about this? Okay, seeing then, I would entertain a motion regarding Decision Appeal 23003 and affirm Planning Commission's decision to approve Special Use 23001.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Miguel. Madam Clerk, would you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Andy. Great, great work. Okay, Commissioners, this takes us to Item Thirteen on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Is there any any wishes to remove either any one of the items presented, Items A through G, for comment, question, discussion? And if there is not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Items A through G. Hope to approve. We have a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bruce.
Yes, thank you very much, folks. Our consent agenda is approved. Item fourteen on our agenda is our County Managers' Report and Matters. Mr. Harmio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be really quick. I think you've already had an update through all the departments over the course of the last few weeks that we've presented, so for the first meeting in January, we'll be adopting the Open Meetings Act. Mr. Trujillo has already reviewed those, gone over those. The next item that procedurally that we approve is the Rules and Procedures. Couple of weeks ago, I emailed you those out. Please take a look at it. If there's any changes, please let me know. I would also suggest that maybe we add a section, and I don't know what that section would be, regarding letters of support. If there's a lot of letters of support that come in that are not necessarily on the Commission calendar, or the or their deadline, looking for grant support is last Friday, an example, and then we have the meeting on Tuesday, how we could handle those, or if we want me to just to sign off on those letters of support, or what kind of threshold there needs to be. So give that some thought. I thought the Rules and Procedures would be that place to add that into there as well. Earlier, I handed out the Code of Ethics. Please review that, and that will also be in the first meeting in January. And so Renell produced that yesterday, and if you have any changes to the Code of Ethics, please get it to me that first week in January, and we could incorporate that. I didn't anticipate a signing ceremony like we have done in other years, since this body to take is going to remain the same. If there's, if you would like a signing ceremony on the Code of Ethics, we could do that as well, so give that some thought. So on the Wymer property behind SuperSave, that purchase is complete, that has not been recorded. Taos County owns the property now behind SuperSave, so thank you, Commissioners, for getting that accomplished. That property would help us with any future growth that the county may have as well. Just a reminder, on Thursday morning at nine o'clock at at SuperSave, Taos Feeds Taos has their opening ceremony, so please attend if you're able to attend. Taos Feeds Taos did ask the county, they were having a little bit of donation issues, so if we could come up with any donations, we looked at the American Rescue Plan Act funding and met the definition of being able to provide funding to a nonprofit organization. So Taos County is coming in to help Taos Feeds Taos with $10,000. So the, so Mr. Cordova is pretty happy about that as well. So Chris is helping in the background too, to get that processed. We determined on Friday how we could use the ARPA funds to help them, and they're greatly appreciative of it. So they were, they had more requests than usual this year. That's the need for additional funding. And just a reminder that on Wednesday, which I calendared for you, is the Second Annual Senior Citizen Holiday Luncheon at Baton Hall. On Thursday, which I also calendared for you, is the Employee Holiday Party as well. And so please attend if you can. The county will be closed on Friday, December 22nd, and Friday, December 25th.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. Is that?
There's, and I would also like to, us to consider possibly closing the 26th. So we're doing some stuff internally that if we're able to close, operations-wise, I'd also recommend to the commission that, that we close down on the 26th as well.
Is that?
And that's it for my report. It's done. For any questions?
Personally, I don't see an issue closing down on the 26th, but I don't know what other folks think.
I think that's just a good gesture for all the employees.
I agree. Exactly.
One comment. Thank you for working out a way to help with our ARPA funds for Taos Feeds Taos. It's, you know, the reality in our community is that people are hungry, and that Taos Feeds Taos effort is not the only effort that is seeing increased numbers. In fact, some dramatically increased numbers. If you talk with folks at St. James, or at the Questa Food Bank, or at Shared Table, the numbers have gone up and are staying really steady. It's possibly a really important news story, because I remember earlier this year, in the spring and the early summer, there was all of this attention being paid in the media to what was going to happen when benefits ended in July of this year, like people were going to fall off a cliff. But I haven't seen anything in any of our media, like national or state, or about, about what actually did happen. And we're seeing in our very own community what is happening, and that is that people are hungry, and the various organizations that are doing what they can to help feed people are struggling with the demand. So good time of year to get that message out, that these organizations, St. James, Questa Food Bank, Shared Table, Taos Feeds Taos, they all need our help. So thank you for helping and helping Taos County to help.
And along those lines, Tanner from Taos Community Foundation will be coming probably in the month of January. He wasn't able to come today to do a report out on how we've used ARPA funds, and that example of the Questa Food Bank, we did give money to ARPA through that as well, so.
We do, thank you. And I know the town of Taos is doing what they can to help as well. So we appreciate those efforts. Commissioners, other questions for our manager?
I would just add in regards to that comment or topic on, on the organizations out there doing some good work and helping those less fortunate. Commissioner Bush and I did have a conversation as I sit with the Food Action Team on the 100% Community, and that conversation is, is, you know, the numbers were brought forth by all these organizations, and they're doing the best that they can, and certainly, they seem to be getting less and less help with that. So yeah, that's a continued conversation, and just so you all know, I'm sure that we're going to hear more of that as we move forward.
I did send out an email, didn't put it in my notes, but I did ask the employees, we also have a volunteer opportunity. Jim Tree Project is gonna, needs help rock being present and stuffing stockings, so we're going to do that in the commission chambers on the morning of the 21st. So it's something that we partnered with them. So if we get a good group of volunteers, that should go fairly quickly.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Further questions for our manager? I just have one question, something that was brought up earlier, that I know, kind of at the moment, it looked like you had something to say, but the seed grant, the Community Energy Efficiency Development Block Grant, which Representative Ortiz carried through our legislature, are we applying for that?
Yes.
We already have?
We are, we haven't hit submit, but, and Renewable Taos knows that we're submitting, so I'm not sure why they keep coming.
Oh, making sure. Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's a, it's a great program, right? It also helps those who are, who are struggling a little bit more to, to potentially, and I mean, the goal is for them to reduce their utility bills. So it's a great program. Thank you for being this close to hitting submit. Appreciate that. Any further questions for County Manager? Okay, then.
I wanted to thank the staff that put together the event for dispatch and for the jail. You know, they never get to join us in our celebrations, and, you know, it's given. Obviously, they need to be there, and so we were able to, to take it to them and be there and celebrate with them. So grateful for those folks, and grateful for the staff that actually took the time to put it together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Okay, this takes us to Item 15, Commissioners' Reports and Matters. 15A is New Business to Be Considered at a Future Commission Meeting. Commissioners, any requests for new business?
Okay.
If I may, I know Brent, I'm sorry, I'm not going, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot here, but definitely want to talk more about, about future conversations around fire and, and, you know, we, we met here on Friday with JR and the, what is it, the Watershed Coalition? Am I saying that right? Taos Valley Watershed Coalition. Conversations around emergencies and what that might look like in the future. And, you know, there's, we're all making efforts to, to mitigate some of the fuels in the mountains, but there's still that concern that we need to have a plan and a, and a plan for the community to rest assure that if, and it's not if, we keep on saying, it's not if, it's when, that we have a plan in place on how we're going to mitigate and how we're going to move, you know, take care of the folks in Taos and watersheds and whatnot. So I just want to kind of just put that in everyone's mind, that those are conversations. I know I've had Brent, and you're real attentive to that, and so I just want to make sure that, that as we go into the new year, that we're really, you know, making sure that we're doing something.
On that note, I already have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with JR, Logan, to, of how we're going to go through 2024, and I have a couple of ideas, and I'm sure JR has a list of ideas as well, but stay tuned when we come back. And there's some things I need to talk over with JR and some ideas.
Perfect.
So we still traded emails last night, and so then tomorrow at 10 o'clock to have our meeting.
Appreciate that, Brent, and we want the folks of Taos to know that we are talking, and we are thinking about that seriously.
Thank you. Yeah, a very important topic. Thank you. 15B is Commissioners' Announcements. Any announcements, Commissioners? Okay, then let's move on to Item 16 on our agenda. The Taos County Board of Commissioners May and Be in Enclosed Session. 16A, because I know, 16A is Discussion Regarding County Manager. This matter may be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act Exemption 10 dash 15 dash 1H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. And Item 16B, Discussion Regarding the Potential Purchase of Property. This matter may be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act Exemption 10 dash 15 dash 1H8, which allows for discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of reproperty, real property or water rights by the public body. Commissioners, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatenius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bush?
Yes. Okay, we are going to go into executive session, closed session at 10:58 a.m. We'll see you back here when we're done with these two matters.
Okay, everyone. It is 12:43 PM on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. I would entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
Motion to come back into session.
Thank you, Commissioner Muscatanias.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call a vote to come back into regular session?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bush.
Yes, thank you very much. Taz County Board of County Commissioners convened in closed session, and I will turn it over to our attorney, Patrick Trujillo, to provide us a report on that session.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Only those matters that are referenced in the agenda were discussed during closed session, and no final decisions were made on either item.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Is there a motion to approve our attorney's report on our closed session?
Motion.
Thank you, Miguel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Muscatanias. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Bush.
Yes, thank you very much. Your report is accepted. This leads us to item 17, which is adjournment. I will go ahead and make a motion to adjourn at 12:44 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miguel. All in favor?